Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for this regular board meeting of the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees. The date is October 15th and the time is 6:06. If you will please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is being led tonight by Ryan Galbadoan, who is America's high school senior. Ryan?
I pledge allegiance to the Texas divide of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. And before we get started, I'd also like to recognize our state Board of Education member, Georgina Pettis, is with us tonight. Ms. Pettis, thank you for joining us.
Ms. Nahara, a moment of silence. I would like to request a moment of silence for Alexa Barrera, the little girl who lost her life at the crossing walk for EPISD.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Mena. We will move on with item number three, the superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nakara, members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to welcome and introduce the newest members of our elite leadership team. So as I call your name, please stand to be recognized. Starting off with Ms. Melissa Parham, who is our new assistant superintendent. Ms. Parham. Virginia Acevedo, our new assistant principal at Rojas Elementary. And Ms. Karina Muñoz, who is our new licensed specialist in school psychology. Congratulations. Y'all do a great job in your area, okay? Thank you. Also, events. We have had an extremely successful start to the 2019-2020 school year. We are finished our first nine weeks, so I want to thank all of our amazing teachers, our administrators, our parents, obviously our awesome, awesome students. Let's keep this tremendous momentum going here this second nine weeks. Also, a great event that I always look forward to attending is our SISD March Fest, in which we get to showcase our amazing, amazing high school marching bands. And this event will take place this Saturday, October 19th, at the SAC. It starts at 8:00 a.m., and we look forward to seeing our community come out and cheer our great fine arts students. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza.
President Nakara?
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
I just wanted to say, it is so nice to see Ms. Maribel Macias back at the seat. Welcome back.
I'm sorry? Okay, we're gonna move on with item number four, board honors. Mr. Escobar?
Good evening, President Nakara, members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honoree. First, we honor a Team SISD principal for being recognized as a 2019-20 Region 19 Middle School Principal of the Year by the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals. TASP recognizes principals and assistant principals for exemplary performance and outstanding leadership. This extraordinary campus leader was nominated for the award by fellow TASP members. As a Region 19 winner, she will compete for the Texas Principal of the Year Honor June 9th in Dallas. From Enzer Middle School, congratulations to Ms. Lisa Estala Batson. Congratulations once again. Dr. Espinoza, trustees, if you'll please take your seat for our next presentation, which will be delivered by Director of our Special Education Department, Mr. Richard Ortega, and team.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, President Nakara, Dr. Espinoza, board members. My name is Richard Ortega. I'm the Director of Special Education, and tonight we have a presentation in honor of National Disability Awareness and Employability Month. Our presentation is gonna focus on a new program that we just started this year, and I'm very happy to say it took us many months to get it started, and it's a worthwhile endeavor for our students that are here tonight, and they're in their uniforms, and the project or the program is Project Search. And this is in collaboration with the Hospitals of Providence. So tonight, we're gonna have our staff come up, and they're gonna do a presentation along with our students, and this all was really possible due to my transition coordinator, Willy Yáñez. So if she could stand up to be recognized. And then we also have the team that works at the hospital with our students, and it's Monica Gascó, who is our VAC teacher. Esther Triu, one of our job coaches, who works also at the hospital. And last but not least, we also have Raquel and Paloma from Empowering Hands. So at this point in time, I'm gonna turn over the presentation to Monica Gascó.
Good evening. My name is Ryan. My coworkers have selected me to be the spokesperson for tonight. First of all, I would like to proudly introduce my coworkers and Team SISD's first cohort of Project Search interns. Gilbert Campoya. Brandi Gonzalez. Myself, Ryan Galbadoan. Raul Gonzalez. Miguel Lopez. Soli Marquez. John De Los Reyes. Marlon Nahas. Juan Casanova. And Jorge Garcia.
I would like to introduce to you the staff that works with David at the hospital. Monica Gascó. And Esther Triu. With SISD rec. with Des Ramos. And Paloma with Empowering Hands.
Thank you, Dr. Jose Espinoza and Board of Trustees, for making this possible.
Thank you, Melissa Olivares, Richard Ortega, Rosa Yáñez, for your hard work.
Thank you, Cabinet members and all involved in bringing Project Search to SISD.
This is a picture of us working at our first rotation in the different department in the hospital.
This program is a true collaboration between several agencies. Project Search, the Hospitals of Providence East Campus, SISD, and El Paso Community Foundation.
Also, Empowering Hands, Texas Workforce Solutions, VR Service, Emergies, and Border Parks.
We are proud. We want to show you a video of us working.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Richard Ortega.
Thank you, Mr. Lucio Ortega.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you, David Oscar Morales.
Thank you, Guato Mena.
Thank you, Mr. Gary Gandara.
Thank you, Ms. Pettis Olivares.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Guerra.
Thank you, Ms. Heika Greis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sintra Nahara.
Thank you, Dr. Jose Espinoza.
Thank you for believing in us.
If I may, Mr. Ortega, guys, y'all are absolutely amazing. So much of the time, the Board of Trustees will approve a program, but we never actually get to see it working. Thank you so much for sharing this video and helping us see what you do every day. This was absolutely amazing. Thank you very, very much.
President Nakara?
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
You all got to see the students in action through a video. My father was in the hospital about a month and a half ago, and I got to see them in action firsthand at the hospital. I was walking down the hallway, and I saw Ms. Triu, and I was like, wait, what are you doing here? I was like, oh, I forgot Project Search. So she actually walked me through, you know, taking me out of the, oh my goodness, with my dad, but I got to see where the kids go, where the office is, the different programs. So thank you all so much. I know when I was working at Region 19, 10 years ago, we were trying to bring Project Search to El Paso, Texas, and it is so exciting, not just to see, you know, we get to approve things up here, but being able to see you all working firsthand at the hospital. I am just so thankful that we were able to bring this to fruition. Thank you all so much for everything. Ms. Olivares, Mr. Ortega, thank you for your support. Ms. Yáñez, thank you all so much. Again, guys, you're doing an amazing job. Keep it up, so we can continue this program. Thank you.
So just real quick, just to wrap it up, I just wanna thank everybody. Like I said, it was a huge undertaking. It took us months and months of planning and coordinating with all the different agencies and organizations, and of course, ourselves within SISD, making sure that we selected the right students. It is a process. They have to apply, they go through just so many things, and something they didn't mention, all of our kids, along with the staff, have to get multiple shots just to be able to work internship there at the hospital. So it's not just show up. They had to take all these shots in order to be able to go and work there as well. So they were brave individuals, because I'm afraid of shots, so I couldn't take them. But they were able to do that. So having said that, thank you very much, and at this time, if we could, unless you have something you wanna say, sir?
Yeah, President Nakara, one more, you know, thanks to the staff, to students, and I don't know if they're in here. I would like to recognize their parents. So if you're a parent of one of these... Parents, please stand on your feet. Oh, wow, there he is. Parents, please stay on your feet. Parents, I just wanna thank you for staying involved in your child's education, partnering up with the school district and all the staff. Thank you all. These amazing students are a direct reflection of you at home. So thank you for being part of their lives, obviously during this school time, but also in the future. So thank you, muchas gracias, padres. Thank you so much.
So at this time, if you all could come down, so we can take a picture with our students and the staff, please.
Can we see everybody? And just a quick note, that the photo is taken by Mr. Largo, our district photographer, will be posted on our district website. It'll be available for a free, high-resolution download. Great job. Thank you all so much again, and thank you, Ms. Ortega and team, for an outstanding presentation. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And our final presentation will be delivered by Texas State Board of Education, District One Representative, Ms. Georgina Pettis.
Good evening, Board President Nakara, Trustees, Superintendent, Dr. Espinoza, Cabinet, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to follow that presentation. I'm not sure that I'm gonna be as great. As you know, my district covers El Paso to Laredo, to Zapata County, which is the southernmost point of Texas, south of Laredo. It is the largest district in the state, and it's also the largest district in the nation. And never, and I'm saying that, there's actually a point of why this is good for you, not just me, never has there been three state proclamations delivered in one night. You're the first. So it is my pleasure to begin. Whereas the Socorro Independent School District Board of Trustees has earned a reputation for unity and commitment to excellence, whereas the board's service to the community has been recognized over the years, it has been named to the Texas Honor Board and twice honored at the Region 19 Education Service and a Board of the Year. Whereas the Board of Trustees has twice been a semifinalist for the HEB Excellence Award, whereas the Socorro Board of Trustees was recently named top-five school board finalists for the 2019 HEB Excellence in Education Award, therefore be it resolved, and congratulations. Number two. I have to go to your website to keep up with all of them. Whereas the Socorro Independent School District is known as an innovative district that strives to offer education that makes all its graduates college and career-ready, whereas the district's mission is to optimize students' academic, artistic, athletic, and interpersonal skills, and whereas it is fitting that the Socorro Independent School District recently received the 2019 HEB Large District Excellence in Education Award, which carries also with it a $100,000 cash award. Whereas the Socorro Independent School District is the first West Texas and first El Paso-area district to receive this prestigious award, and whereas this award recognizes the school district's commitment to student achievement through innovative programs, parent and community involvement, and professional development opportunities for teachers, administrators, now therefore be it resolved. Number three. Whereas providing a high-quality education for all students is the top priority of the Texas public school system, whereas well-educated graduates are prepared to pursue their dreams to the fullest extent possible, whereas educational results partnership is a nonprofit organization that uses data to identify strategies that accelerate student success. This summer, they named 855 schools to the 2018-2019 Texas Honorable to acknowledge schools that have outperformed their peers in closing achievement gaps among high-poverty student populations and demonstrated high level of achievement and college readiness. Whereas eight campuses in the Socorro Independent School District earned a place on this prestigious Honorable, therefore be it resolved. I offer my congratulations. I thank you all for an incredible job well done. The eight schools are Enzer Middle School, Sue A. Shook Elementary School, El Fida Chávez Elementary School, James P. Butler Elementary School, John Druigan School, where my children went to school, Loma Verde Elementary School, Mission Early College, and Myrtle Cooper Elementary School. In recognition of all of the tremendous work by the board, the superintendent, your cabinet, your faculty and staff, I hereby affix my signature today, the 15th of October 2019, to all three proclamations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I actually have to sign them. It's part of the plan. Well, I do have a stamp, but I thought it would be nice to actually sign them in your presence. Is it? Thank you.
So the photo looks really nice if the seal of Texas is showing, not just the fold. Thank you so much. Thank you for... All I get to do is read about your paper. Thank you so much. I'm not picking favorites, they just happen to be in the middle. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
They're yours to keep. I'll just take the photos back to our archives. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Perez. That concludes our recognitions.
Press, President Nahara?
Yes, sir.
I do want to thank, obviously, I want to thank our amazing students. Thank you all so much again, and our staff and the parents. But I do want to thank Ms. Georgina Perez for the recognition. I also want to thank Ms. Georgina Perez for the consistent support of her fighting for public education, Ms. Perez, so it does not go unnoticed. We're going to continue to fight for our students, and I just appreciate your help, Ms. Perez. Good job. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to continue with item number six. Board of Trustees, Business A. Consider Approval of Generation Texas Month Proclamation, October 2019. Ms. McCabon.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. Texas Education Code, Chapter 29911, requires each middle school, junior high school, and high school to provide students with information about higher education options. This post-secondary program is called Generation Texas. And this evening, we have Caitlin Osavedo, a senior at Americas High School, who's going to be reading the proclamation for Generation Texas Month.
Whereas Texas Education Code, Chapter 29911, requires each middle school, junior high school, and high school to provide students with information about higher education options. Whereas the mission of Socorro Independent School District is to maximize our children's academic, artistic, athletic, and social skills. Whereas the mission of the Socorro Independent School Guidance and Counting Program is to provide a comprehensive developmental guidance and counting program that will maximize the academic, personal, social, and career competencies of all students so that they may realize personal post-secondary goals. Whereas students who attend institutions of higher education attain a wide range of personal, financial, and other lifelong benefits. Whereas the demand for graduates of higher education globally has increased and will continue to grow. Whereas the counselors, faculty, and staff of Socorro Independent School District campuses realize the importance of educating students on higher education, including higher education options, admissions requirements, availability of financial aid, and financial aid requirements. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Generation Texas Month.
Please ask the Board to accept the proclamation as read.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gondada and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you so very much. Thank you. And Item 6B, Consider Approval of Red Ribbon Week Proclamation, October 23rd through the 31st of 2019. Ms. McCabon.
Thank you. Red Ribbon Week is the largest and oldest drug prevention campaign nationwide. Each year, we request the SISD Board to approve the proclamation to honor our students and community in striving for a safe, drug-free, and healthy lifestyle. This evening, I'm excited to introduce fifth grader from Purple Heart Elementary, DJ Arera.
Whereas the Socorro Independent School District values the health and safety of all of our, of all of our students and our community. And whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children. And whereas it is the goal of Red Ribbon Week and the Socorro Independent School District to involve families, schools, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establishes an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and an ongoing initiative to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas Red Ribbon Week is celebrated in honor of Enrique Quique Camarena, a federal drug enforcement agent who was killed while investigating a drug cartel. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes the fami, the families and individual responsibilities for living a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And there are many activities planned during Red Ribbon Week campaign on campus throughout Socorro ISD. Now therefore be it resolved that the Socorro Independent School District Board of Trustees do hereby proclaim October 23rd through October 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week. And it encourages students, parents, employees, and our community to participate in drug prevention education activities to demonstrate that our school district and community are committed to being drug-free. National Red Ribbon Week.
Can we ask the Board to accept the proclamation as read? I have a motion by Mr. Gondada and a second by Mr. Geta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you so very much. Item number seven, Open Farm. We had no one sign up for this tonight, so we will move on to item number eight, District Reports. A, the Bond Accountability Committee update. Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza. Good evening, Board Trustees. On behalf of the 2017 Bond Accountability Committee, I am pleased to present you with an update on the organization, operation, and success of the BAC. The BAC consists of a diverse group of stakeholders, representing parents, employees, volunteers, businesses, and taxpayers as a whole. The BAC was formed soon after the community overwhelmingly approved Bond 2017 to ensure and promote communication and accountability surrounding all elements within the program. The BAC is an independent committee, a citizens committee, that represents the community as a whole and reports to the Board of Trustees and the general public. To date, we have had seven productive meetings. The first gathering served as an orientation, an organizational meeting, with the six others focusing on project status updates. We also had the opportunity to tour Cactus Trails Elementary, while it was under construction, and have been invited to attend several community meetings for on designs for Socorro High School and improvements for Eldorado, Monwood, and Americas High School. In addition, we have been included in the celebration of progress in projects at the Cactus Trails Groundbreaking and the Ribbon Cutting, and the most recent Socorro High School groundbreaking event as well. In March, we will reach the two-year anniversary of our committee, and will work with staff and the Board to consider renewal of all members, and if need be, opening to the public a call for new members. The activities of the BAC have been in line with the charge set forth by the Board of Trustees in our organizing charter. Our first meeting concentrated on the review of the 2017 Facilities Advisory Committee Report and in-depth overview of Bond 2017. Also, a brief, a briefing on project management and procedures, including the district's process for the selection of professional services and contracts. The six following meetings have served to provide specific updates on all projects, including the ones in Bond 2017, including the timelines, budget, design considerations, challenges, and next steps. Staff presents photos and individual fact sheets for projects, which detail the information discussed. Committee members are given the opportunity to openly engage in discussion, provide feedback, ask questions, and share concerns. Adding to the open, transparent implementation of Bond 2017, all summer views of the committee's meetings and documents shared with us are posted on the district's website. Staff has maintained a positive and informative outreach effort promoting communication and accountability surrounding all elements within the bond. In addition to the website, the district has utilized a variety of media to share bond information as well, including the @ Socorro Community Newsletter, internal publications, social media events, and celebrations, also going through local media as well. Overall, we have been impressed with the complete team effort in successfully launching Bond 2017. Projects are on time and meet and will meet the commitments made to the community. District staff, school, and community and professionals hired to complete the projects are working collaboratively to ensure promises made are promises kept. Personally, I would like to thank Socorro ISD Administration and Board of Trustees for all their hard work and dedication to ensuring community involvement and transparency in all aspects of the development and implementation of Bond 2017. Specifically, we are appreciative of the staff being very accommodating and supporting to the activities of the Bond Accountability Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Are there any questions for Mr. Alvarez? Mr. Alvarez, we are deeply grateful for your commitment to not only our district, but to the Bond Accountability Committee. Thank you so much, and we really appreciate your dedication.
No problem, and thank you for what you do for our community. So we see all the, all the families and all the kids come up, and this is why we do it, right? We do this because we want to give back to the community. And thank you for you, what you all do. You know, you represent well. You've done really well at communicating and being transparent with the community. And I, for one, appreciate it, and this is why I volunteer my time as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8B, Facilities Report. Mr. Ayington.
Come on, Mr. Ayington. Show us some roofs.
No roofs. Oh. There's some would-be golfers, maybe.
Would-be golfers.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. Again, I do want to thank Mr. Alvarez and all his committee work. They have been very supportive and, and have done a great job, not only through the Bond Accountability Committee, but Mr. Alvarez also served on the Facility Advisory Committee. So again, thank you. Tonight, my report will be kind of brief. I do have some pictures. And then at the end, I'm going to turn it over to our architects that are working on our stadium project, SAC number two, and they will give you a update of where we're on that particular project. Socorro High School, of course, everybody knows we're working there. We've been working. We did a lot of work during the intercession and hopes to get it, some parking done for the students and everything. And we actually did quite a bit of demolition work during that week since the kids were not in the, in the school. So I don't know if this is going to bring some memories to a few of the Board members, but I do have some pictures to show. As you can see, the building is coming down. We are in the demolition stages. This is the entrance to the auditorium, and you can see that we are moving into the auxiliary gym and, and removing that structure in order for preparation of tying in the new structure with the old structure. Some additional demolition going on. You can see that some of the outer buildings that were the automotive shop, electrical shop, they are gone, demoed and removed in order for us to prepare for the new construction. This is from an interior looking out, and you can see that demolition is a major emphasis right now, and, and we will continue to do that. And then, of course, on the outer portion of the site, we have some site work going on, some site grading. This particular slide is basically has to do with some storm drainage and stuff that are a part of the, the new parking lot. So everything at Socorro High School is progressing. The Board has approved the guaranteed maximum price. The CM at risk is preparing to bid out multiple packages over the next few, next month or so, and, and those packages will start the actual construction of the new, the new building. Cactus Trails, of course, this facility is completed, and we're, we're still in the warranty period and reviewing the punch list items. Monwood High School, we, we started that project, the sports lighting package, the remaining packages have been bid. I mean, have, you approved the guaranteed maximum price, and we are starting to put those out on the, advertising them for the bids on multiple packages. But the sports lighting package is the one that is primarily what we're focusing on and right now until we get the other packages advertised and bid out. And you can see that our sports lighting is up and functional. We are tweaking the system, but the, the lights have been installed at both the softball and the baseball fields. Americas High School, last month, you approved the, the sports lighting package. That's being put out for proposals, and we should be receiving some proposals here in a few weeks on, on that package. And then we're continuing to work on the remaining packages. Elder, Eldorado High School, I will hold off on reporting on this because there is an agenda item that I will show you more slides and stuff on Eldorado High School under that particular item. The auxiliary gyms, the bid package one is out on the streets. It's going to bid with, in the next few weeks. And then the other two packages, package two and three, will follow those packages for the auxiliary gyms at the remaining elementary schools. Support and Services, Technology Building, that is on the consent item. We did receive multiple bids on that when we rebid it, and we presented that to the Finance Committee, and it is on the consent agenda, and I'll speak to that if there's any questions at that time.
Yes, Ms. Nahara? I have a question, Mr. Ayington.
Yes, sir.
It's regarding on the consent agenda, so you're talking about technology, and I saw some item two, we're talking about the support, about the technology building?
Yes.
So this is the second time we bid the project.
That is correct.
And this is lower?
Yes. Can I get some paperwork?
Which is the good thing. I mean, I'm not arguing that the second bid was lower. My question is, did, do we really approve this?
No, you're going to approve it tonight.
So why is this on consent, why is it on consent agenda?
Because it's, it was put on consent because it went through purchase, and you can pull that, and we can discuss it. But basically, what I showed Finance Committee last night, on May the 30th, we had two bidders that proposed on the project at that time, and it, the bid at that time was $14,995,000. We rebid it after some redesign and some modifications. Nothing major, but just some clarifications and modification. On September the 25th, we had four proposals at that time, so we actually doubled the amount of people by putting it back out for proposal. The bids came in, if you look strictly at base bid, after we came up with a best and final, the bid came in at 12 points, $12,670,000. The other bids, and, and the construction industry, when you bid a project, you look at the low to the high, and you look at that spread. And normally, if you have a 5% spread between high and the low, it's pretty good. What we had between the low and second was 1% difference. So it was close. From low to the third bidder was a little over 2%. And then the, the fourth bidder was a little, he was 8%. So basically, we got good numbers, and talking to one of the contractors that did not get the project, and then we're, you know, but he's going to be working on one of our other school, he was very surprised that we came in with the numbers. Now, if you look at the 12- Now, if you look at the 12-6 base bid, no alternates included, and the base bid between the one in May, there's two point three, two million three hundred and twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars difference, lower, which is fifteen point five percent lower. So, it paid to, you know, put it out again with modifications.
And I'm glad, Mr. Eington, that we got the lowest bid. My question was, why is it in consent agenda and not in new business?
Because in purchasing, a lot of the bids come in on rebids and stuff come through purchasing, you know, I mean, through a consent agenda item. Yeah, I mean, we, from now on, we'll put all bids of that price under regular items, but this time, it fell under consent.
Thank you.
The new combo school, we are starting our meetings with our design team, the architect, and we closed on, as I told you, back in July, we closed on the property, and we are starting to work on the various design projects on that. Now, the next project is the student activity project. I want to ask the board if they wouldn't mind come out and take a front seat over here. We're going to drop the big projector. My architects are not in church, they're going to move up and to the front of the class. Okay, today, we have been meeting in my office, in my conference room, with the various departments, with the architects, reviewing what we presented to you back on, I think it was September the 5th, at a board workshop in the same room. And we were at twenty-five thousand feet, so we're slowly getting down a little bit lower, and we, the design team has made some modifications, and from that meeting, some input, and has been meeting with the departments to review this project. We're still, you know, at the conceptual stage, but we're getting closer, and I think what you'll see tonight is basically a, we refined the location of the SAC two, and then, we're actually getting into some of the concepts and building and the design of the various buildings. But tonight, I have Fred Ortiz, Mark Vandero, Dustin Harris, and Hector with HKS slash Parkhill Smith and Cooper here to make the presentation. So, I'm going to turn it over to Fred. He's an El Paso boy, and he's going to go through the presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Born and raised, very proud of it, and so excited, as I mentioned last time, and so excited to be here, working on this project. And going through the process has been so awesome, because having been gone for over thirty years and digging into some research in order to influence and inspire myself and the team to put together the best product for you, I mean, it's nothing like the mountains, you know, the, everything, the essence of this place is incredible. So, what I'm going to do in about fifteen minutes is give you a snapshot of what we did today and have been doing since the last time we talked to you. So, starting at macro scale, we're going to look at the master plan, and if you recall, we were debating where this stadium should fall, and so, the large rectangle implies the land that we have to work with. Now, the puzzle became a little challenging because there are so many other variables that are in play. So, just right off the screen here, we have Joe Battle, and Bob Hope is coming onto and bounds the northern portion of our site. There is a, an Arroyo that moves right through here and goes across Bob Hope. Bob Hope is planned to be expanded in the future and extend to the east. So, as you can see, right off the bat, it's already starting to eat up into the land that we have available to place the stadium. It was in our best interest to stay within our property and away from the Arroyo, so this outer border is an easement or a setback that we should stay away from. If not, it's going to trigger a lot of review process in time that we don't have in our project. So, working within that, we decided to place the stadium in this location. Essentially, it's in line with SAC one. We have defined zones of the parking that we're going to need to service the stadium, and yes, there's minor detail like the disconnect here, and we went into great detail today about busing and where do they stage and all that during a game, and making sure that all works properly. We're also looking beyond in the future, also looking at the potential of a future maintenance building that could be sided in areas, again, that are away from the setback within our property. We're also looking at practice soccer field in these sort of residual triangular areas and trying to fit rectangles and triangles. It's crazy, and sometimes, the topography is changing. So, there's a lot of challenges on site, but I think we've settled on something really spectacular here, and one of the exciting things is the space in between the two stadiums. So, we're looking at creating an incredible amphitheater that's going to allow a lot of community interaction and connectivity from the north and south. So, jumping from the two-dimensional to a 3D, again, Joe Battle down low, Bob Hope, so we're looking at making these really awesome approaches and arrival scenarios to the site and in between the two stadiums, not only here, but also on the south side. And we are really playing up our front door here. The backside is going to be somewhat back of house, where you're going to have a lot of the teams and bands and authorized vehicles, parking, and moving towards the stadium, to both stadiums, actually, to actually service the events. And then, of course, the cul-de-sac, which ultimately, Bob Hope will extend on, and you can see the Arroyo coming through and the practice field and the maintenance building. So, earlier, I mentioned inspiration, and this is, when I think of El Paso, I think of the beautiful skyline, the mountains, but down in the detail of the facets and the rock formations and, you know, driving through Trans Mountain and the beautiful skies and all that. So, in order to get inspired and wanting to capture the essence of this place is, you know, the terrain and the fabric, the Arroyos, the, even the site has a lot of that going on in it, but the seasonal color and all that comes and goes, we're going to capture the essence, and ultimately, it'll define a palette that'll make its way into defining this project. So, when you look at the massing, so the more we get into research, this is not a very large project, you know, it's only a 6,000-seat stadium, but it requires field access, it requires a press box, it requires hospitality suite. There is also a district facility that's at the south end of the stadium that also needs to be multifunctional and service so much, that's going to be doing great things for the, for the district. But if we can come up with a kit of parts, something so simple, there's a diagram like this where it's sort of this frame that has elements under it, which could be toilets and concessions, or it could be press and hospitality suite, or the multifunctional space that can be divided in thirds that will be able to hold assemblies and banquets, like at the end of year after sports seasons and things of that nature. If we can, and in between those things could have gating, I think we'll do our job. Now, notice how this sort of trellising and shading is so important, so when we start looking at the scale of this and how we can translate something like this, that is as a residential scale, but imagine and visualize that as sort of a gateway and arrival, so infilling that with gating, and there's going to be a lot of drop in topography, so be able to find our way to get up there with steps and ramping, and also selective plantings in order to make those approaches much nicer. I found this really beautiful home here in El Paso, it's up in the mountain, but notice how the beautiful textures, you know, and the classic El Paso rock wall, it's everywhere, right? But if we can take that a little, like a step up, and actually create something that brings more color and richness to the project, and also ground it, you know, make it feel somewhat heavy, but it's also supporting something so light and delicate, and we're going to be very selective to put glass where glass needs to go, right? So, we're being budget conscious. So, the press obviously needs to be able to view the field, hospitality needs to be also be able to look not only at the field, but also potentially the amphitheater and SAC one to the, to the west. So, and then, there's going to be some really great opportunities with the simplicity of just simple surfaces. And then, you know, in the same vein, when you look at this house, you know, the way these rock walls are defining and creating outdoor rooms, and so, if you can visualize something like of this scale that could begin to inform the way one arrives up into the main concourse of the new stadium. So, not being afraid to let the natural stuff that goes on and around everywhere in this region, let it, let it abut the project, let it abut the front door, be smart about how we step up and ramp up and create shading and more welcoming, and also, it provides opportunities for branding this, you know, the Socorro District will be branded, and wayfinding will also be very important throughout the entire facility. And then, so, you know, we're building 3D models as we're doing this, and so, last time, I think we flew around the model, so that was kind of a teaser. I think now that we're really getting more serious, we're going to be able to take these models to the, oops, models to the next level. And so, these are just views that, these entryways can begin to frame views to beyond, so you'll see the press box there and concessions and toilets beyond, and of course, the various devices that we'll be able to create to define those unique spaces. Now, it's one thing to give it form, but when you start thinking about materials, I touched on the idea of this sort of rock-like facades. Here's a spring training facility that we did in Arizona. The climate is very similar, so, you know, talking about tilt-up construction and maybe applying stone or rock to it to give it that state of permanence and something much more solid, and we see these terraces throughout El Paso, this is the Botanic Garden, but, you know, this beautiful color that brings into the project, nice plantings, and also, we use gabian walls, so these are like baskets that are filled with rock that, you know, depending on the type of rock, it's going to introduce some really beautiful colors. And at times, you'll see that even on the exterior of buildings. So, we started, we've been testing that out, and so, whether it's a low gabian wall defining a part of an entrance to a spring training facility, or something that acts more as a retaining wall, or something more columnar, that's like a column providing structure to a canopy, or in this case, taking, visualize that on these surfaces here. So, this is a toilet and concessions building, maybe supports that are supporting the suite level above, and then, the district facility building in the distance here in the south, again, simple forms, glass where you need it. I mean, this view from right here is going to be incredible. And it also is going to allow a lot of great connectivity from not only SAC two, but over onto the amphitheater. So, again, I'm going to ask you to visualize something of this scale, and if you were to really transform that to a suite level, what's so funny? What's so funny? Yeah, that's the El Paso in me, right there. Yeah. Yes, they're already, they've confirmed they're going to be one of the first concessionaires here. So, but, you know, the idea that the press level, hospitality suite, you know, high visibility, and take this sort of mass that's supporting this light, delicate structure up above with concessions, access to toilets and, you know, first aid, and I'm sure, things like that that go naturally with the stadium. And here, just, we start touching on how this building is going to evolve, it's got to be fully connected, and then, there's going to be beautiful opportunities for terraces that are going to allow viewing, different and unique viewing experiences of any event that's going on here. So, on the west side of that, okay, so we were just on the other side, but now that you're standing in the amphitheater, let's say, if this is like a hospitality area or at the end of a press row, so press, you know, a lot of their attention is going to be to the east, looking at the field. So, if we could take advantage of these large expanses of wall space where there's nothing on it, okay, it's like this building here, it's like tilt-up, and it's got acrylic coating on it, a lot of blank area, well, that can naturally become a screen, right? The building itself, like imagine this, it becomes a natural bandshelf, so bring speakers, lights, set up a stage. Now, all of a sudden, you've got cameras on site, you're projecting that on the big screen, which is really the back of the wall. Now, that should be pretty exciting to have, right? Now, to invite the families, right, on the weekend, you have movie night on the lawn, bring your chairs, right? That would be incredible. So, what's that? Good. Yeah, I was excited when we were creating this because I just think there's so much potential, and during today's work session, it's like, that amphitheater is such a large area, I mean, you might be able to get 2,000 to 3,000 people there, but what the programming will become is yet to be determined. I mean, there's so many great opportunities, festivals, marathons, you know, food trucks, I mean, you name it, it's going to happen. I guarantee you, if Erica has anything to say about it, it's going to happen. And so, moving down the line a little bit, so, we're being, again, these are just testing, we're testing a lot of ideas, so the idea of grounding, concessions, terracing, shading, making sure glass is where it needs to be, but this, this press level is going to have such a great presence as part of the gateway into the stadium, and this space up here is going to be incredible. So, if I take you up there, not only will you be able to see the game from that terrace, but when you're up there, you'll be able to engage the amphitheater and SAC one beyond. Unfortunately, we're not high enough to be able to see the field, but hey, there's going to be so much thing, so many things going on here that it'll be a really great experience. So, if the band is not playing under the press, what if it's set up, like someone comes in, sets up a stage in between SAC one and SAC two, now, all the audience is actually facing in that direction to a stage. So, there's so much flexibility. During our session today, someone said, well, what if it's at the, at the south end of the amphitheater? And I'll say, well, everything's directed. And I said, yeah, well, it could be that the stage is in the middle of the amphitheater, now, everything is in the round. So, it all depends on the performance and activity. And so, another view at the south end of the suite level or press level, again, there's going to be how we engage and define the zone so that if we do have a band playing there, that the stages are appropriately scaled so that so many things can happen there, corporate outings, leasable space that you can actually, you know, create some revenue by that, and the breakout space, the shading, all those things are just continuing, you know, the retaining walls, the plantings, you know, dealing with stormwater is going to be something we've got to really focus on. So, from that platform, if you look, you know, to the north, the video board's going to be there, you know, which is another opportunity for sponsorships and things of that nature, and naming rights potentially, or if you're actually at the district facilities terrace at the, at the south end, looking north, you'll be able to have great views of the field and also the video board. So, you imagine there, on a night, on a football banquet, when a kid is being honored, and all of a sudden, the audience is looking at him or her, but behind, the video board is showing his or her highlights. That'd be pretty special. And then, another really quick note, as we were flying around the model, changing the time of days, because we're trying to be really sensitive to how to be sure that there's a high level of comfort, especially when you've got a lot of glass here, north-facing glass obviously won't get too much direct light, but, you know, subtle moves in the architecture can actually change the look and feel and impression, how people feel, how they work and all that. But, so, these are just studies of how, what happens when the El Paso sun will track in the sky and how beautiful this simple form is going to look in the horizon. And then, lastly, if we move to the northeast corner, now, you're, let's say, potentially, this could be a band location, or it could be a corporation's terrace that they've leased out for the game or event, but here, you kind of get a sense of a panoramic view of the, of the entire complex in that you've got the district's facilities, you've got concessions and toilets, something that allows you to move back and forth, you've got the press and hospitality suite with really cool terraces, and then, we're really going to look at this cross-section right here because I think there's a lot of opportunities there where the video board and sponsorship and all that takes place, but the idea of terracing all this and being at the end here is going to be an incredible opportunity. So, that's a lot of stuff, it's really exciting. I guess we can open it up for questions?
Any questions? Yeah, it took you ten minutes, I timed you. Do what? This, we, this will be complete in, what did we say, 2022? Yeah, in 2022, so it's going to take, you know, a little time to design it, and then, of course, to build it and stuff, to put it out for proposals. But what the next steps are, I think there was a slider question, between now and the end of the month, we're going to meet again and start working on the individual buildings and stuff, and then, come back, I don't think it was November, but in December, to the board again for another for another, basically we will be through our schematic design process and we will have the buildings more refined and, and designed. Today, I mean, we had floor plans, could have showed you them, but we kind of bled all over them because there was a lot of discussions and stuff. So, but I think the site is coming along, the project's coming along and, you know, any questions? Yes, sir. On the football stadium is 6,000. Yes. 3,500 on home and 2,500 on visitors. Yeah. And it's going to be, you know, visualize the SAC. The SAC has a bowl and then it has a concourse that goes three-fourths of the way around it. We're not going to have a second level. It's all going to be on a bowl shape. So all the, it's going, the, the individual's going to be closer to the field and everything. And we are angling the, the cedons in a little bit.
Yes, I think what I mentioned earlier was that these corners are going to be really special. Because notice how, right now, the, the floor elevation of the district's facility building here is a little lower than what the main concourse is. A lot of that is driven because we can't keep those buildings in line because the topography is dropping. So we, why build taller buildings when you don't need them? So everything's got to drop along with the topography and, and, but I think that lends itself to opportunities. So this, this thing about stepping down and creating a terrace that might begin to modify the numbers that Tom just mentioned, you know, yeah, this might be set out to be 3,500 and 25 on this side, it adds up to 6,000. But if I can gain more value in creating a better experience, something that will create revenue, I think you might be able to rethink how those numbers shuffle out in the end. So we look forward to generating those. Again, we're going to dive into all these and ultimately by the time we see you again, we'll have much more development.
Thank you. Thank you. And that completes my facility report unless there's any questions.
Does anyone have any more questions for Mr. Iington? Thank you, Mr. Iington.
Thank you.
Item 8C, 2019 WIN update with Ms. Borrego.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I get the distinct pleasure today to give you our yearly update on the, on the WIN Academy and what our data is showing. And, you know, I've always said that we're extremely blessed in this profession. We get to get up every day and come to work, if you even want to call it that, and make a difference in kids' lives. And, and I really think that the WIN Academy has saved lives in so many kids and we're seeing such great things. And believe it or not, this is year five, when Dr. Espinoza had the vision and the inspiration and that passion to start that WIN Academy, our WIN Academy, and how much we've grown and how much success that we've had with it. I'm very fortunate today to have some awesome members of my team with me today that will help present. Kelly McBane from Research and Evaluation, Jessica Macias, and, and also Gabby Elliott, one of our very first WIN principals when we started. And I want to say a special thank you because a lot of work goes into making WIN such a success. So I want to thank Dr. Espinoza for always being so supportive, for, I want to thank all the instruction officers, the technology specialists, Miguel Moreno, Hector Reyna, and their teams, the assistant superintendents for supporting as we go through this and, and try to bring the best to our kiddos. So thank you to each and every one of them. So when we, when we first started about five years ago, WIN, for all of our new board members, we've come to know it as WIN. And, and many times you see it on Twitter and you see all the cool stuff that we're doing with the kids. WIN, WIN stands for work hard, I can do it attitude, and never give up. And the WIN Academy, these, this is for students that have not been successful in a traditional school setting. And they were able, and they've been able to gain two or more years' worth of knowledge in the fast-track demanding, flexible education system that includes many facets. And so WIN students get a multitude of benefits that has helped close those achievement gaps. So to help me share today in the presentation is first going to be Jessica Macias, she's going to tell you a little bit about the WIN program and give you a little background on it. And then Ms. Kelly McBane is going to give you some awesome data that's going to excite you. It's all like green, and you know, green's always good. That means go. So I'd like to welcome Jessica Macias to the podium.
Good evening, President Nahara and members of the board. I'm here to give you, of course, an update on WIN and of course, some little bit of history for those new board members. The WIN program has started in 10 of our campuses in 2015. Our teachers that were a part of the WIN Academy committed to more instructional time and more personalized learning. The WIN program is rigorous and it's a college-bound learning environment. So in these classrooms, like in all our classrooms, but especially in our WIN classrooms, we do promote college and we do have the you-will-go-to-college attitude. So WIN serves about 20 students in each class setting and that starts from second all the way to ninth grade. Students arrive at school by 7:25 every day and they start instruction at 7:30. And they remain there until 4:30. And this is Monday through Thursday, so they get that extra additional instructional time for teachers to, of course, provide more of the foundation in reading and math. So they have that extended time. And on Fridays, they get to leave at 3:15. The students attend the school on designated Saturdays and intercession and summer break. So they do know and our parents do know that when they do sign up their children for the WIN program, that they are going to be a part of these break times that they do, will be required to attend. And then of course, it's more accountability for all. So again, like in 2015, we did start with 10 campuses. And the 10 campuses that we started were Bill Seibert, James Butler, Campestre, Desert WIN, Hambrick, Waco, Mission Ridge, Purple Heart, Robert Rojas, and Socorro Middle School. Those were the original campuses that we started the WIN program. And now today, we are in 19 of our schools. That includes Lujan Chavez, Mission Ridge, again, Purple Heart, but we had added Sierra Vista, Clark Middle School, Sanchez Middle School, Socorro Middle School, Sun Ridge, and Socorro High School. Socorro High School does have just the ninth grade and that's where we're at right now. So again, with the more instructional time, each one of our WIN students is provided a laptop that they have, so they do have the one-to-one devices. And we do work with our teachers to provide them the professional development, to show our teacher, our students how to use it, and they can actually take those devices home. We also provide hotspots, so free internet for our families so that our children can utilize the technology at home as well. So now I invite one of my colleagues, Ms. McBane, to explain more of the data. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So I wanted to go ahead and show you a quick snapshot of how our WIN students are doing. We were able to match 350 students that have been in the WIN program for three consecutive years who have also tested for three consecutive years. This slide shows the math data. And in the peach color you can see, that's 2017 data. And then you can see the 2019 STAR performance data in the blue section. The passing performance levels on the STAR exam are approaches grade level, meets grade level, and masters grade level. The WIN students from 2017 had a passing rate at 66%. And by 2019, these same students increased to 83% passing, a 17-point gain. Not only did the minimum passing rates increase, but the WIN program had increases in both meets and masters performance levels as well, up from 19 to 34% and 5% to 9% respectively, which is a 15-point gain in meets and a 4% gain in masters. So you can see all the green there. For reading, once again, these are students matched up for three years that have been in the WIN program and have tested for three years. The 2017 data in peach, you can see a 47% passing rate at the approaches grade level compared to 64%, another 17-point gain at the approaches level. And also a 10% point increase in the meets grade level performance standard from eight to 18, and a 3% gain at the masters grade level. And then just to showcase how dedicated our students and our parents are to the program, we wanted to do a comparison for you regarding the WIN attendance rate versus overall district rate. And you can see our WIN program is almost a full percentage point higher at 96.41% than the district overall. And our district overall rate is a very good rate at 95.49. So it, it really just showcases the dedication to our WIN program. Right now, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Elliott. She's our principal at Bill Seibert.
Good evening, President Nahara, the rest of the board members, and Dr. Espinoza. It's a pleasure to be here.
Ms. Ms. Elliott, I have a question. And I asked Ms., the team, if we could have a principal join us, somebody who's on the ground and sees our amazing students. And in this case, Ms. Elliott, as was mentioned earlier, she's been there with WIN, at Seibert when WIN started. And I don't know if the trustees have questions for Ms. Elliott, but I do have a question because when this initiative got started, when this academy got started years ago, it, it, it was created from, you know, a famous teacher, Mr. Jaime Escalante, and they actually did a movie about him, Stand and Deliver, a teacher in, in East LA Garfield High School. And they showed what his, his approach and what he did with those students who had lots of challenges. And that's where this started from. It started, you know, five years ago. And one of the questions or pushbacks that I had at the start was, oh, Dr. Espinoza, the students are going to be exhausted, they're going to be tired, it's not a good idea. They're going to, you're going to get them started early at seven, as the time, could you go to the first slide again? I don't know who has a clicker. You're going to get them started at seven, they're going to be there from 7:30 and they're going to be leaving at 4:30. The other students, the regular ed students, you know, they start at eight and leave at 3:30. You know, they're going to be exhausted. And I said, no, these students, we have some amazing students with the support of the parents, the teachers, the administrators. So I guess it's a long-winded way to get to the question, Ms. Elliott. At your campus, you've been there all these years, what's the stamina like of these students? Do they, is there concerns about their, you know, their stamina, are they exhausted? Just talk to the team about that.
They're excited. You should see them walking back at 3:20 when they come back from supper, they're ready for the classroom, they're smiling, some of them are skipping down the hall. It's, it's really become part of the culture, the school culture, they're, it's, it's their norm, they're used to it, they committed to it, they, they went through a process where they signed a pledge and it's a commitment from the parents, the students, the teachers. And part of their excitement, I truly feel, is because we have a very strong system in place. And for three days out of the, the four days where they sent, they saved till 4:30, they implement the Lit program. And it's really exciting to go in the classrooms and then you see the kids huddled around a campfire, they're wearing their camp vests, they're reading with flashlights. It's, it's really neat to see it in action. They're working on their literacy skills and they don't really realize it because they're having fun, they're chatting with their peers, and it's, it's learning in, in a very fun, engaging, hands-on way. And at the same way, forming relationships, there's a very strong sense of belonging in WIN where they're WIN, they're proud, they, they stand for working hard and they have those attitudes. They don't give up and their teachers are right there next to them, making sure that indeed they're working hard and that they, they work as hard, but they're going to be right there with them, supporting them. As you go down our WIN hallway, you know, it's a lot of pride that colleges, you can see them on the walls. We also have on the, on the floors, we have OSO bots once a week and for that extended hour. So it's, talk about critical thinking, problem solving, their coding, they're using their, their devices. And you see all the, the tape where the kids are, are working hard and working out in the hallways. It's, it's truly engaging, hands-on, they're excited, they're smiling at the end of the day. And once again, it's something they committed to and, and they're proud and, and they're happy to be there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no, I just, you know, thank you to the entire team. And just let me emphasize what the team has said. People ask, well, man, how did Socorro ISD, the largest district in the state, earn an A and a post-secondary readiness distinction? It's about having academies' programs in place for our students, place them in the right settings and give them the necessary support so that they can be successful. There's districts that have talked, superintendents across the state, across the country, we presented in Philadelphia, we presented the WIN Academy in Austin, you know, well, how do y'all do it? Well, you get support from board members to roll this out because this is not cheap. This, every year, costs our school district $7.4 million. You have to pay teachers for the extra, the stipends. If you're going to have the students come in early, stay later, well, the teachers have to come in early and stay later. So we give them stipends, the electronic devices. So I can't thank the trustees enough for, for supporting the, the WIN program. As was said earlier, we have this on 19 campuses, we have 49 schools. We don't have enough funding to have it at every 49 schools. And I have had parents talk to me, Dr. Espinoza, my kid is at the WIN program at this school, he or she's going to this middle school next year, you don't have the WIN program at this middle school, why not? They're thirsty because they see what it does for our students. And as you can see on those results, if you, somebody can click to the, the, either the math or the reading results. I mean, these students approaches started at 66%. 66%. And in my opinion, that is flat-out unacceptable. So you put them in a, in a, in an academy, in the WIN Academy that they need, fast forward, they jump from 66 to 83. That's just the minimum. And again, I can't thank the trustees enough, obviously our awesome teachers who, who sacrifice a lot of time from their, from their, from their, from their families and, and, and to be with our awesome students. And something that wasn't mentioned, these teachers also, they loop with their students. If I'm a third grader in a WIN class with Ms. Borrego, when I go to fourth grade, Ms. Borrego is going to be moving with the students. When I go to fifth grade, Ms. Borrego is going to be moving with the students as well because I'm banking on that emotional bank account. And we do it across our district where our teachers, they treat and they educate our students as though they're our own children, you know? And, and I think that's been a huge, this WIN program has been a huge, huge key to the success of Socorro ISD. I apologize for the soliloquy that I just gave with the editorial, you know, but I just can't, I'm just so excited about the results and we monitor the data consistently and we will continue to monitor it. So thank you to the entire team.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Borrego, I would just like to congratulate your entire team and thank you all so much for your amazing work. I know a lot of many hours and a lot of hard work goes into making this program a success. And like I said earlier, you know, the board approves a program, but we don't get to see results that often. And so thank you so much for presenting this, for allowing us to see what progress these kids have made. I know in the past, we have seen letters from parents and students about what an amazing change it has made to those students' lives. And so we love hearing about the success of our district and so thank you all so much.
And thank you on behalf of everybody. Thank you for all of your support, Board of Trustees. Thank you for always supporting us and backing us in everything that we do for our kids. And Dr. Espinoza, thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item number nine, consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
President Nahara?
Yes, ma'am.
May we pull E2, please?
Any other items?
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Gondeta to approve consent agenda with the exception of item E, 9E2. And I have a second by Ms. Rodriguez, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And the motion carries. Item nine, E two.
President Nahara, on this one, I think we've already discussed it in the facilities report. I just ask that in the future, and I know Mr. Ayington said the same thing, when we have something, a contract or something of this amount, if we can go ahead and put it on new business instead of consent for future. I know we've already had the presentation, but I just wanted to make sure for the record, it's noted that we did have a discussion on this, the information was presented. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item ten, new business A, consider approval of Terricon Consultants, Inc., Terricon for construction material testing for Socorro High School reconstruction project. Mr. Ayington?
Yes, good evening again. On page one seventeen in your book is the item for discussion concerning Terricon Consultants. This was, we were trying to get this presented last September, I mean, last week or last month at the September board meeting. However, I didn't get all of the review information back. So I consulted with our legal attorney, legal counsel, and he recommended that I prepare a board communique, which I believe I sent that to the board a week or so ago. And then to present it today in the board meeting for approval. But what this is basically is each construction project has to have a third-party review or inspection that goes out and makes sure that the concrete is the right PSI, the density of the sand, the soil and everything and all that is done. But legally, we are required to have third-party inspection. This amount from Terricon has been reviewed by VLK Architect and BTC Construction Manager. It's for, in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars and seventy cents. This is of course their estimate on what it will take to do all the testing over the next years until the school is built. And like I said, we reviewed this with legal and they said to go ahead and write the board communique and bring it to the board. They are working on site because had we stopped any inspection, it would have shut down the job basically. So that's why he said to go ahead and inform the board and continue on with the construction. So, and it's, it's, the, another reason is because it's over a hundred thousand dollars and it needs a board approval. Had we, had it been under that, we wouldn't have, not had to do that. But since it's a large project, we felt like by, by the provisions, we would, would need the board approval on it, so. Administration recommends approvals of Terricon estimated cost of construction for material testing and any additional testing in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars and seventy cents as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Mr. Gondola, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item ten B, consider approval of guaranteed maximum price for the remaining improvements at Eldorado High School. Mr. Ayington?
Yes, as I stated in my facility report, I would discuss Eldorado a little bit further and let's see if this, yes, it is, okay. Of course, everybody's aware Eldorado is one of the high schools in the two thousand and seventeen bond program that will be receiving modification and improvements. Tonight we are presenting the remaining package of the facilities. Y'all approved the sports lighting portion of the project. And tonight is, is, we'll be asking for the remaining improvements to Eldorado. Eldorado High School improvements, there will be academic additions, there will be eight classrooms and four science labs and support spaces, fine arts addition, there will be renovation and facility upgrade. There'll be approximately sixty-three thousand five hundred square feet of new construction, thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-two square feet of renovations. The new construction consists of the academic core classrooms and support spaces, the new fine arts facility or building, the choir piano and guitar programs, a new black box theater, career and technology education building, which includes greenhouse robotics, family and consumer science, floral design, animal science and law enforcement, additions to the existing cafeteria because of the size of the cafeteria, and new concessions building the restroom facility near the athletic fields. The renovation will consist of renovate, to the renovations to the existing building to accommodate a new early college high school wing, which we have done at other campuses. Renovate the existing classroom spaces to accommodate fine arts program, renovate and expand special ed programs and renovate and expand existing nurses office and renovate an existing classroom into a new mock courtroom. And then we'll also have some facility upgrades, which includes new HVAC, heat and ventilation and air conditioning equipment, HVAC, new roofs, gyms, cafeteria kitchen area, new sports lighting, which y'all already approved that and that package is out on the streets. And then new parking and landscaping. So with that being the modifications or the improvements to the new Eldorado High School two thousand and seventeen bond program, administration recommends the approval of the guaranteed maximum price by Dan Tech's General Contractors for twenty-five million ninety-four thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars for the remaining improvements to Eldorado High School as presented.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Mr. Mina, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ayington.
Thank you.
Item ten C, consider approval of TASB update, one thirteen, and local policy. Ms. Macias. Woo-hoo, she's back.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, administration recommends consideration and approval of revisions to policies from TASB update one thirteen BJCD and local policy BF as presented.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta. Is there any further discussion? And yes, yes, there is. I did want to have Ms. Macias and myself explain these two policies and why we, the policy committee made the decisions that we did. Ms. Macias, do you want to start with policy BJCD?
Yes. Members of the board, oftentimes when we get local policy updates, TASB makes recommendations. In this case BJCD, they had recommended to redact everything except for two sentences. So as we looked at it, usually when there's redactions, we ensure that those, that very, those details are somewhere else in policy. When we looked and researched and with Ms. Nahara's guidance, these details are not found anywhere within our policy. Therefore, the recommendation was to leave the details as is with the additions that you all see in the light blue. And with that, it would create and allow our stakeholders to have transparency for this policy. So therefore, the recommendations was to leave policy as is without redactions and to include the recommendations made by TASB.
Yes, this policy deals with our superintendent evaluation and as Ms. Macias stated, over two-thirds of it was being recommended to be redacted by TASB. And the policy committee felt that the objectives, the informal evaluation, the formative conferences that are covered in the policy concerning the superintendent's evaluation needed to remain. Specifically, one of the items that they wanted to redact talked about new board members understanding the process of the superintendent's evaluation. And that was going to be gone and I'm like, no, we lose too much valuable information. So the policy committee has recommended that we leave the policy as is. Is there any further questions or comments on this policy?
No ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Macias, can we move on to policy BF, please?
Yes, for policy BF, our recommendation is to add the section of policy audit. One of the items that occurred, and that's when I came on board for audit, in the audit position, was actually to create an ability for us to review all policies within three years. That was something that was understood, however, never put in place. So as TASB started bringing forward updates, this something, this is something that got lost. So we wanted to make sure that this was in policy to ensure that within three years, all of our policies have been reviewed by our cabinet members to ensure that our practices and procedures are transparent and documented within policy.
Yes, and as Ms. Macias said, it has been important to this board to make sure that all of our policies are updated and reviewed and every, every three years. And so in a timely manner, we, the policy is our rules and we want to make sure that we're following our policies and that they are accurate and current. And so adding this to policy BF will ensure that even if at some time this board doesn't sit here, this process will still continue.
And it's with, now it's within our policy that every or twice a year, you all, we all will receive an update. So you will all receive BF regulation, which I will present to cabinet tomorrow, which identifies a procedure set to our cabinet and it has all the policies and their committee review date and the board approval date. So therefore, it'll be transparent for our entire community to see how our board reviews our policies every three years.
Ms. Macias, I really appreciate all your help with these policies. And so we do have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Macias. And item ten D, consider appointment, reappointment of individuals to the El Paso Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Ms. Claudia, it, just to verify, when we did this two months ago, that was for the remainder of this year, correct? And so this will be for the two-year period from January first, two thousand and twenty, and runs through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. Okay. Do I have board members who would like to serve on the Central Appraisal District?
I'll do it.
I'll do it. Round here now.
I have Mr. Garcia and Mr. Mina, who have requested to serve on the Central Appraisal District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item eleven, executive session, the meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to discuss personnel and real estate matters, to consider superintendent's evaluation instrument and timeline, consultation with legal counsel regarding athletic field synthetic grass servicing, and to consider administrative recommendations for principal at Pebble Hills High School and assistant principal at Amadeus High School under Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one point zero seven-one, five-five-one point zero seven-two and five-five-one point zero seven-four. We are adjourned, the time is seven fifty-one. We are back in session, the time is nine forty-four. We'll continue with number twelve, new business A, consider approval of superintendent's evaluation instrument and timeline.
Sorry, it's a little late. Motion to approve the evaluation instrument and the timeline as discussed in executive session.
Second, I'll second that.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morales, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item twelve B, consider approval of administrative recommendations. Number one, principal for Pebble Hills High School. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Mr. Ignacio Estorga as a new principal at Pebble Hills High School.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item twelve B to assistant principal at Amadeus High School. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Mr. Stephen Gomez to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as a new assistant principal at Mountain Wood, at Americas High School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned, the time is nine forty-six.